Kristen, can you call roll?
Yes. Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson could not make it this evening and Commissioner Stern no longer lives in Berkeley. Commissioner Passalacqua?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
And Commissioner Hamame said she could not make it either, but you do have a quorum.
Okay. So we would need to excuse Patterson and Hamame.
Hamame, yes.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I motion to excuse Patterson and Hamame.
Hamame.
I'm going to work on that.
Yeah, me too.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any communications?
No communications this evening that are not... No communications this evening that are just miscellaneous.
Okay. And so we move to citizen comments. This is for items not on the agenda. You will have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but will be noting your comments and will try to address them during discussions. Do we have any comments for items not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on. PSP 1522, 28557 Woodward, Seven Point Provisioning Center. Kristen, would you like to start us off?
I will start you off, yes. So this is for the redevelopment of a State Farm Insurance Office at Wiltshire and Woodward into a marijuana provisioning center. The majority would be used for retail marijuana sales with the remainder for the State Farm office. The applicant has included several amenities that are outlined in the planning review letter. The plan does meet all ordinance requirements. There are some minor items that need to be addressed in both HRC and DPW letters, which could be addressed should you approve the plan after approval. The Planning Commission is also asked to find that the landscaping is consistent with the master plan. That's a typical question that's posed to you. Staff is all recommending approval of the plan. And the reason I paused a little bit earlier with the communication is I did just look at my email and I received one email after the closure of business today, but I will note that it was from Mr. Daniel Vares, and he was opposed to the approval of the plan.
Is the applicant here?
Couple of his representatives are, yes.
Would you like to come up to the podium if you have anything to present to us?
I apologize. I think there may have been a slight miscommunication because I know a couple additional gentlemen are still planning to come. I think they were under the impression that it was starting at 7:10. So I think they are still coming. You know, I think the only thing I would say and...
That might be them walking in right there.
It might be... It looks like, yes. I think that's Brian Howard, our architect. And I think we're still expecting Gabe Rubin as well as part of it. Oh, there you go.
I apologize. I thought it was called for 7:10, so I apologize.
That's all right.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Gabe Rubin. I am one of the founders and partners of Seven Point Dispensing of Michigan. We are here tonight to present our plan that will transform the red building that everyone drives by on Woodward Avenue, located at 28557 Woodward Avenue, formerly Firehouse Subs and formerly the Coffee Beanery, I believe. So I have with me tonight our local team. Brian Howard from HF Architecture. He is the principal. He's located in Royal Oak. His parents live in Berkeley. Brian Senat, our civil engineer with Fleece and Vandenberg. And...
David, what's your...
David Rosansky with Scott Roberts Law Firm. As you are aware, Seven Point withdrew its request to conditionally rezone 1299 Wiltshire and 1276 Franklin. During this presentation, Brian will be discussing and sharing with you our plans to renovate the exterior of the building and including the... as well as the interior renovations. Brian Howard will also talk about our site plan and floor plan. Brian Senat will be sharing with you our stormwater management plan and can answer any civil engineering questions that you all may have. And David is here in support, and in the event he needs to discuss anything, he will do so. So with that being said, I'd like to pass it to Brian Howard. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Aye.
Brian Howard at HF Architecture in Royal Oak. And actually, we had the renderings that are currently on there, we actually had blown up, so I can pass those around if anyone would like to see them, but they are on the screen as well. As Gabe mentioned, we've been working on this project for quite a while, a few years. And when we did come to you to ask for the parking lots to add on because of the parking that we felt was going to be an issue, turns out it really wasn't. We still met the ordinance for the parking. So our parking lot has been redesigned, unlike you see it today out there. It has been redesigned to give us our landscaping that we desperately think that that parking lot needs, as well as, as Brian will talk about, the stormwater detention, our rain garden. We have numerous things in place to help with the stormwater, to help with the fact that it is just a paved parking lot currently. And as you can see on the elevations, we have also, as Gabe stated, the red building. We've gotten rid of the red building and have increased all the parapets on this building. We're adding close to five to seven feet in different ways and different measurements to the overall height of this building. We're creating a more of a friendly, pedestrian-friendly building with sustainable materials. And so we really tried to bring this up to the standards of what we feel a Berkeley building should be. And so it becomes very important to us to fully understand the fact that people will be walking by this building. There will be the entrance on the corner. We're not entering and exiting the same location. We're actually providing the entrance, but then there's an exit. You'll exit the building is actually closer to the parking lot. So all these things became very important to us in terms of trying to really create an identity. And we feel that this building clearly does that. When you start to look at the floor plan of the building, there you can see the renderings. That's along Woodward Avenue. And that's the elevation of Wiltshire, and then that's the rendering of that. So as you scroll through those, we really have tried very hard to create a very aesthetically pleasing building. We've really tried to create an ambiance with this particular building. On the site plan, as you can see right there, you know, the existing building, we didn't add on to it. That is the building that, as it sits today. But what we did create is we created these outdoor areas. We created a bench area, both on the front of Long Woodward, but also along the rain garden area, which will pick up all of our stormwater off of our roof. And then we have the underground stormwater detention, which Brian will talk about in more detail. The floor plan, which is the next... We really tried to create a retail establishment. And what I mean by that is the amount of area or square footage that is allocated to the actual sales area. As you can see in most of these dispensaries, you try and maximize but not give all of that square footage. You have other areas that you have to accommodate in these tight buildings. You have a vault area. You have restrooms. You have break rooms. You have all these things. So what we really tried to do is focus that retail space or sales area up towards the upper quadrant, so people aren't... You're not meandering through the building. It's very contained, as well as how you exit, which is actually over towards those restrooms, is how you'll exit and then go back to the parking lot. But the interior finishes of, if you scroll a little bit in the next few, these are interior renderings of the actual dispensary sales area. That's the entry. So we're really trying to, again, bring those sustainable materials inside the building that we're now developing from the exterior of the building. Polish concrete floors, tile, all stained wood. So we really tried to look at like a higher-end retail or merchant, you know, type space, like a Macy's or a Nordstrom's or something like that. So that became a very important aspect of this particular building, was to bring in a very high-end finish. You know, this is very much, you know, what a Macy's would look like, you know, at the, you know, perfume area or something to that effect. So now that we've kind of went through the building itself, I'll turn it over to Brian and he can talk more about the landscaping as well as the civil portion of it. Thank you.
Good evening. As mentioned, I'm Brian Senat, civil engineer with Fleece and Vandenberg. Just want to bring your attention to three items that relate to the site, that they're all, even though they're three separate items, they're all intertwined, really the parking lot, the stormwater situation, and the landscaping of the site and the parking lot. We have an existing parking lot in place there today. We looked at that. We could have just left it the way it was, although we did note that the spaces and the aisle dimensions are not in compliance with today's ordinance from a drive aisle width significantly. So we took the challenge of trying to figure out how to get as many parking spaces as we could and come into compliance with the ordinance requirements as far as parking space dimensions and aisle widths. Looked at a number of different scenarios and were able to do that while combining, you know, the things like the compact car spacing, sizing of the ordinance requirements, and still meet all of the drive aisle widths and parking space dimensions, and all doing that with only losing one space. So we are going from, I believe, 20 spaces down to 19 spaces, but we are going from a non-conformant situation to being in full compliance with the ordinance. And we have a two-way circulation through the site. And from a landscaping situation, you know, we've added as much as we can within that footprint. And in doing so, we've added the one island that really kind of helps define that aisle or that alleyway, you know, whereas today it's just kind of all pavement and, you know, you don't know necessarily where to go. That curbed landscape aisle will really kind of give that some more definition, like a true, you know, alleyway. We do have significant landscaping. We've added it wherever we can find spaces. I mean, it's hard to do, to add more than what's there, but we have added some and we've done kind of an over-the-top job of that, I believe, as far as, you know, really augmenting the site with a lot of, you know, amenities and kind of... I think Brian Howard did a good job of kind of creating that space for us to fill. From a stormwater standpoint, you know, adding a green roof, adding a rain garden, adding, you know, full detention of a system underneath the parking lot. We've been through two different reviews with Hubleroth and Clark, and they are in agreement that the site is, you know, going to be a huge improvement and it meets their requirements. The only remaining comment that they had was that we would connect the roof drainage to the actual detention system instead of the rain garden, which we can obviously do. So I think that's the three things I wanted to mention. I'm here for any questions you have.
Does anybody have questions?
I wonder if they want to speak a little bit about the parking, because I'm sure that's probably what some of the residents have their concerns are in. I don't know if you guys want to address that now or...
So, yes, as to the parking. So as Brian mentioned, we obviously have 19 spaces planned currently onsite, which is current parking complies with the ordinance requirements. Based on feedback we'd received from the Planning Commission, it was clear that parking in front of residential is preferable to tearing down any residential buildings and using that for parking instead. So as a result, we pivoted to incorporate that feedback. We're currently in discussions with multiple businesses. We're hoping to secure 10 to 15 additional spaces, specifically for employees. Additionally, several spaces are available right now on Wiltshire to the public, so that could be used by both employees and customers. We're also exploring some additional parking off-site for employees, as well as possibly encouraging employees to use alternative transportation, to hopefully limit the number of spaces that we actually need to use for our employees. And finally, we're also open to reevaluation after a year to see if public's preferences have changed or the commission, and we're willing to pivot again if at that point it makes sense to change our current plans. So I think incorporates our thoughts on parking and happy to take any additional questions.
So if I remember correctly, when you were last here, you presented a report of sorts that I think claimed needing 56, if I remember correctly. Do you still think that that is the parking need, or did you reevaluate and realize that that might have been too high or...
So is this something you want to speak on or... I think after reevaluating the current market conditions and our layout, I think that report was a little bit overstated in terms of the number of parking spaces that were recommended for this site. Certainly, we hope and think that it's going to be a busy store, but the average customer goes into a dispensary and spends approximately six minutes in a dispensary. So we feel that, given our current parking and some off-street parking, that our parking will be more than adequate to support this operation.
And then if I remember correctly, you stated that there would be 20 employees in the largest shift?
Again, market conditions. While, again, we hope that this is a very profitable store that, you know, remains in the city of Berkeley for forever, you know, we think that initially it will most likely be a scaled-back number of employees. You know, I don't know if you guys are aware of the current market conditions, but there's a lot of competition. The pricing is not what it was. So we anticipate that, you know, there's going to be some competition. We're not going to be the... We're not the only dispensary around. People have, you know, different options, and we think we initially overstated the number of employees.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, so I'm going to open it up for citizens' comments at this point. Again, three minutes. Come to the podium, state your name and city of residence. The one thing I feel like I need to mention, too, is that the Planning Commission has no jurisdiction over where these are located. That was a city council decision. So all we can do is look and see if their site plan meets our ordinances. So with that, take it away.
I am Jonas Reimer, resident of Berkeley, 1628 Harvard Road, student at Berkeley High School. First and foremost, I am in full support of this plan. This will help bring money to the city and also use the property as an entity for about six years now, as far as I know. I'm happy this proposal has a bike rack repair station and Mogo rental from what I've seen on the document. I believe we should be making Berkeley more bicycle-friendly, and this is a step in the right direction. The more we add bike infrastructure around the city and the more pedestrian-friendly areas we build, people will be encouraged to drive less and use alternative modes of transportation. One thing I can't stress enough is that the parking minimum parking zone need to be abolished. Land currently used for parking lots could be... Could be used for stuff like housing or new businesses. Not only should be abolished, but I believe that a parking maximum should take its place. We need to be making Berkeley more people-centric, and one way to make significant progress in that direction is to abolish the parking minimum parking zones and also instate a parking maximum. Ann Arbor recently abolished all parking minimums, and the cities of River Rouge and East Coast have abolished parking minimums, along with implementing parking maximums. I urge the city to get rid of all minimum parking requirements. If we are serious about fighting climate change, we simply need to make Berkeley a city where you don't need a car to complete basic everyday tasks and a city you can walk and bike to places.
Hi, my name is John McNally. I'm from Berkeley, Michigan, 1408 Wiltshire. So first of all, it doesn't seem like the site plan really does fit the intended use. And I know it seems like you're more looking to fit the site to your available space. I challenge that last time you said it, average customer would be 20 minutes. This time you say it's six minutes, and that's to help downplay your need for the parking spaces that were of the house. You stated last time there were 23 employees. I do count at least 19 kiosks within your system, which means at least 19 salespeople plus armed security guards and whoever else, maybe a site manager, what have you, certainly equals more people than you have parking spaces. With that said, you did also state last time, and you kind of allude to it today, but you're downplaying it, that Seven Points stated a desire to be the Nordstrom of the marijuana sales. With that, you claim 23 employees necessary to run your business. And also, your council stated, if you don't give us the house, we will park up and down your street. I'm going to say that one again. Their council stated, if you don't give us the house, we will park up and down your street. That clearly disregards any neighborly cooperation. So I would like to go on record to request that no employee shall park on the street. If there's not enough parking spaces for the employees, it certainly does not fit the site plan. That should be fundamental. So I would like to request that no employees park on the street, and you could do this with a one-hour parking limit or permitted parking. Also, I don't... I'll say this, but I can't say for certain. It appears that the handicap space does not meet the ADA requirements of being the closest space to the door, and it certainly needs to be a minimum size of 192 inches by 20 feet, which it may be. But it doesn't appear that that's the closest space to the door. So that might want to be readdressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
An assortment of thoughts for you all. My name is Mary Glenn. I'm at 1350 Franklin. I do agree that the rendering of the exterior is a big improvement over the old firehouse sub, so that's a bonus there. A general note for the council, in the previous meeting, there were reluctant yeses to the possibility of taking the house on Wiltshire against the master deed. And, you know, that was... That came out after we had our public comments. So I just want to point out that, in general, if you are not a firm, solid, all-in yes on a possibility or a proposal, then it should be a no. So just for consideration. In the last meeting, they mentioned, the operators mentioned that they were considering doing business hours until 10:00 PM every day of the week. This may not be a Planning Commission question, so if you can advise to whom that concern should be addressed, that would be great, because 10:00 PM every day is not cool. In regards to the actual structure of the perimeter walls, it looked on the plans like they're six feet tall along the neighbors' boundaries. Is there a possibility that they could be raised to maybe seven feet, just to give those neighbors a little more privacy and sound abatement? Will there be security cameras? I would like to know if those are going to be tied into the Berkeley Public Safety Department. You mentioned there are going to be benches outside. Can there be some kind of signage to prevent people from smoking on the benches once they've been inside the store, because no one really wants to smell the skunk pot? Is there a possibility of putting a "left-turn-only" sign from the alley that leads onto Franklin as opposed to having them turn right and park on my street? If we could redirect the alley traffic to only turn left... If we could redirect the alley traffic to only turn left off of Franklin and then directly onto Woodward, that would be awesome. Little practical note during construction and specifically digging up the parking lot, I have to assume there will be some vermin and some rats running around as a result of that. So if there can be some kind of vermin mitigation, that would be very much appreciated. And then lastly, I hope I'm in my three minutes here, just a little note on the strip LED lighting that seems to be popping up and down Woodward, like the green and the white and the red. It's low-rent, it's tacky. I'm hoping that's not part of your, I'm hoping that's not part of your design. So then more broadly to the Planning Commission, if we can try to elevate the look of Berkeley along Woodward as opposed to dragging it down and looking like you're on a way to the gentleman's club with all of those LED lights. Maybe it's just me, but I think it looks not, it looks particularly low-rent. I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Joanne Steinquist. I'm also on Wiltshire in Berkeley. And I wanted to address one of the points this other resident just did, and that was the hours. So last I knew, Seven Point was planning on being opened seven days a week till 10:00 at night. And I just feel that that is, you know, it's more excessive than what we have right now. That little area of Berkeley, the stores usually close earlier. I know Westborne's only open till 8:00. It just seems it's kind of excessive, and I think it would be, you know, a show of respect for Seven Point. They're new in the neighborhood. For the most part, they're not wanted. So I think it would be, you know, a show of respect to the residents if they were to reduce those hours of operation. And I would even go so far as to ask that they're closed entirely on Sunday because that would give us, you know, one day of peace where we're not dealing with traffic and, you know, trying to get out of your street when people are trying to turn into the business and the noise and everything. I just think it would be, on their part, it'd be a show of good faith to the residents if they were to reexamine these hours today. They've, I know in the past, they talked about wanting to be the biggest dispensary around and 80,000 cars a day going up and down Woodward. And now today, they're coming from a whole different angle, that it's not going to be as busy as they thought. And so there, again, I would ask that they consider, you know, being respectful to our quiet neighborhood and reducing these hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name's Ed Lash. I'm a Berkeley resident as well. Just a couple, apologize for being late. Just wanted to clarify that the on-street parking on Wiltshire, was that the two spaces directly adjacent to the property? That's when you refer to that, you don't talk about anything.
No, we're talking about, there's about eight parking spaces.
So the problem with having a conversation like this is that anybody listening to it can't hear that. So if you ask your question and then we can try and get the answers.
Okay, just trying to clarify where the Wiltshire parking was alluded to. The other thing is, has there been or will there be a light pollution study done for the, to get site plan approval? And then the third question is, where is the snow or snow plowing? Where is that snow going to be pushed into the lot? And will spaces be lost because of that operation? Or is it going to be scooped up and taken off sites in order to maintain the minimum amount of spots required? So, thank you.
Thank you. Kristin, you said we had one email, right?
We had one email. It was not shared with you because it was received after close of business today. I can read it if you would like.
Or give us the gist of it or something?
Yeah, I can give you the gist of it. So it was from a Daniel Veras. He wanted to make three points. First, that he felt that the number of licenses increased from three to five was an arbitrary decision made without the consent of Berkeley residents. Second, and this has been talked about a couple times, he was concerned about the representation at the sketch plan review about this being a facility that would be, quote-unquote, "the Costco of marijuana dispensaries." And then lastly, he thought that at the sketch plan, that the applicant's representations and answers were not necessarily cooperative with the neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, my husband did send an email and that was not it.
Yeah, I can, that's, it's. Yeah, this is, this is a different, this is a different email. This was sent to an email account that's, this email that I previously read was from a Daniel Veras. This email was sent to an email account that's no longer active.
That would explain that.
Yeah, so that's why you didn't receive it. I don't know if Vice Chair Kempner, given that that was a little bit of an oversight and we've had some transitions, would allow the audience member to read this or summarize her husband's email.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable in this case.
Thank you. It may have been the email address on the letter we got. I'm not, I'm not sure. Okay, so this is from Thomas Rolowitz, my hubby, to the Planning Commission. I may not be able to attend the September 13 meeting in person, so I will submit comments in advance. I was pleased to see the level of detail presented in the latest site plan commissioned from Seven Point. It appears my earlier concerns about stormwater runoff from Seven Point's parking lot aggravating sewer backups in the neighborhood have been addressed in the new submission. I am especially relieved that the dispensary parking lot appears to now be confined to the existing footprint rather than being expanded to take over two adjacent currently residential parcels as in the original site plan. The attention being paid to stormwater mitigation and the engineering review by Hubbell, Roffin, Clark pleased me as well. I believe if the site is actually, this is underlined, built to the specifications in the new submission, the combination of smaller parking area, parking lot, water retention basins, the roof garden, I'm sorry, the rain garden on the site of the existing patio, and the adoption of HRNC's recommendation that runoff from the roof also be detained will mean stormwater problems will be no worse in the neighborhood than they currently are and may be slightly better. I'm grateful that my specific concerns about this aspect of the dispensary plan have apparently been addressed. For the record, though, I want to reiterate my displeasure, and this is not specific to the commission here, I want to reiterate my displeasure at the way the city of Berkeley largely, largely circumvented its citizens when it approved commercial marijuana. As I pointed out in previous comments to this commission, the city apparently presumed that because Berkeley residents had voted to approve a state law allowing personal possession and use of recreational marijuana, they also approved of three, later magically five marijuana businesses in Berkeley. In my opinion, the city was wrong to presume. Approval of the state law does not imply approval of commercial marijuana. Look no further than Claussen for proof. Residents of Claussen approved the state recreational marijuana law by roughly the same margin as Berkeley, the glasses at the end of the day. But when the city of Claussen actually put commercial marijuana to a vote, the city, the citizens voted down both commercial proposals by essentially the same margin by which they approved the state law. For all I know, Berkeley residents would have voted in favor of commercial marijuana had the, had the city explained what they would be voting for and offered them a chance to vote. But no one knows for sure because residents weren't extended that courtesy. Something as potentially contentious as commercial marijuana deserved to be affirmed by citizen, by citizen vote and wasn't. A survey and town hall meeting were no-fit substitutes. The small expression of dissatisfaction you see here may be only a tiny fraction of the actual dissatisfaction among residents. I sincerely hope the city recognizes that and is far more cautious about approving individual marijuana businesses and diligent about supervising them than it was when it approved commercial marijuana in general. Thank you for your consideration. Thomas F. Rolowitz, Jr.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, could I have that for the record?
Oh, surely, yes. If there's no one else, going once, going twice. All right, I'm going to close citizens' comments and turn it over to the Planning Commission Are we first going to allow them to address any of their comments? Yeah, I'm trying to, does anybody want to address any of the questions that were there?
I'm glad to respond to some of those. I took a few notes here. So a couple details, barrier-free parking space location. The one that would be the closest is in a spot, you know, that Central Island location, and there's no room for a barrier-free space there. So those are compact car spaces, again, back to the whole drive aisle width, parking space size issue that we had to work around. So the closest spot that is available that would meet the requirements of an ADA space is that one that's on the north, and we would be grading that, have graded that, so that there is a barrier-free route from that space to the door. So it meets the requirements of the, of ADA. Left turn. In our wayfinding plan, we do have a call-out for a left turn on the building so that people that are coming around the south side of the parking lot into the alley are encouraged to turn left and go up to Wiltshire. And from there, they can turn left or right, but we're trying to kind of discourage people from going down to Franklin through the rest of the alley. Again, there's that kind of, you know, to the south of this building is a one-way in with angled parking. So our intention is to try to encourage people to use Wiltshire and not go down to Franklin. Photometrics, as far as light pollution, there is a photometric plan that was submitted, reviewed by staff, I don't know who, but, so that was approved. Snow storage location, the bottom-left corner of the site is the only real legitimate place to store it. So that'll be done so until such time that Mother Nature brings us too much snow and then is an operational thing to remove it from there. So those are the ones I can address. So anybody else?
One thing that the site plan does not show, but we are definitely going to add to this property, is an EV station, charging station. We feel it's very important for sustainability. I don't know which space that will occur at just yet, but we definitely are going to incorporate that, so.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
I had notes on a couple other things that I can comment on or that the applicant may want to address. So one of the commenters talked about the idea of no employees parking on the street via one-hour parking limit or permitted parking. We don't currently have permitted parking in the city, and we have very limited use of the two-hour parking limits. That's something we would have to take up separately with DPW and public safety, should that become a problem. There were several questions on the business hours, so maybe the applicant could chime on, chime in on that. And there was also a question on security cameras. The idea of the vermin mitigation, that's something we have rat harbage standards in our city code, and that's something that I can assure you I hear about every day and the code enforcement officer takes very seriously. So if there's an issue with that, we will most certainly be on top of that, and I would encourage you, should this move forward, to please let me know ASAP if that's a problem. There was the question of the screen wall being raised to seven feet. You, as the commission, can ask the applicant if they'd be willing to do that. Six feet is what's required, and that's what they've provided. And then there was also the question of where, they referenced Wiltshire parking, so I don't know if the applicant can answer what they were referring to as far as the Wiltshire parking spaces.
Thank you.
So I'll take on a couple of those. The parking on Wiltshire, my understanding is there's like eight or so parking spots sort of up and down that street. That's what we envision in terms of, you know, that aspect, and that's in addition to what I mentioned with regard to those discussions with other businesses for employee parking. So we do have, you know, additional parking aside from the 19 in mind. As to the business hours, you know, that's just the ordinance. We're just going by the ordinance. We're investing a lot of money in a market that is increasingly declining across the state, just, just because it is maturing. And so, you know, in order to be competitive, we do need to take advantage of the hours that the ordinance has allowed for us to operate. So, you know, with, with respect to that, that, that is just set via ordinance.
And did I, while you're at the podium, I had seen some head shaking about the LED lights on Woodward in the windows, you know, the white and the greens. You guys do not have plans to put those in?
No, absolutely not. We're not doing that.
But Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong, should they change their mind? We don't currently have anything in our wheelhouse to stop that from happening.
Not currently.
Currently, right. Working on it.
We're working on it, yeah.
So can I clarify? When we're talking about the Wiltshire parking, do we mean in front of the residences on Wiltshire?
Let me clarify.
So there's about six to eight parking spaces directly north of the subject property.
So where Flagstar, there's a, there's a sign, okay, that says parking beyond this point right there. So everything west of that, and I can show you, can I approach? So this is today, and this is, I imagine, Flagstar maybe or another business. But this is looking east. There's Woodward. There's the subject property, and there's three parking spaces right at, I took the picture right at the, pretty much right in line with 1299 Wiltshire.
Okay.
So there's about another space in between that one and between that one and...
So not in front of houses and in front of, yes.
No, this is in front of the commercial property.
So, so there's 110 feet from that wall to about where that parking is? Is that the area that you're talking about? Okay.
Could we have a point up here so we can all see, please?
Can you, can you, or with your mouse, we're just, yeah, or point, yes, however. Are we talking about right here? Yes.
Thank you. There are the limits. I see the cursor going.
So I...
There should be clarification. Those aren't, this is just on-street parking. This is not, these are not designated parking spots.
Correct, correct.
This is like any other street.
Right. And while I have said before that I have some concerns about where our parking ordinance was for these businesses, the reality is, is the ordinance is what it is, and that is the only thing that we can hold them to. If they feel as a business they need more parking, then they acquire more parking or make a parking agreement or whatever, all we are allowed to do is hold them to what our standard says they must have, and they do meet that. Sure.
I don't think I brought this up in the past, but I, I think this is a good time to bring this up. During this whole process, we, we actually started interviewing people, right, to, to hire, to pre-hire. Seventy-five percent of our pre-hires, and this is subject to change, but seventy-five percent of our pre-hires live in the city of Berkeley. So that, that was intentionally done, one, to support Berkeley residents and the Berkeley community. I, I went to Berkeley High School. I love the city, and I want to offer residents of Berkeley the job opportunities. So seventy-five percent of our employees live in Berkeley. We're going to very much encourage them to not drive to work. So we're, we're hoping that this is not an issue, and, you know, that, that's just one of the things that we did as a company to, one, help the community, help Berkeley residents, and limit the, the number of employees. And, you know, that, that's just one of the things that we did as a company to, one, help the community, help Berkeley residents, and limit the number of employee cars in our parking lot and around the city.
Any other questions from our discussions?
Did we get through all the citizens?
I'm kinda, I'm kinda like through my notes to see if there's anything that I missed.
I don't think it's tied in with approval, but were you guys planning to have, or do you have cameras on-site? Yes?
Yeah, it's a requirement of the state.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's fine, you're fine.
Um, so then, someone asked about a seven-foot wall separating that residential side. Do you have a, an opinion or a thought on that?
We are open to, to raising the height to seven feet. The wall is being demolished anyway, so we're, that's not, it's not, that's not an issue to raise it to seven feet.
Okay. Commissioners, anything to say?
I mean... For me, there's a lot of concerns here that I respect. Let's say, not all of them fall within this commission's wheelhouse to enforce, but we obviously are here to ask and have your voices heard.
No, I have no comments. I, one, one question, though. There, I, if you wanted to explain this a little more, it looked like there was a small traffic signal or something at the corner of a building for pedestrian warnings. Just curious how that, just how it works.
Yeah, that was specifically done for a reason because of the alley and traffic to create basically the pedestrians, as they're walking to their car, this will go off. It's a motion sensor. So, as they go past that, it'll blink and it'll give them an alert that either a car's coming or vice versa, that the car sees that there's a person coming. And we do that in Royal Oak a lot where we're building these big buildings and there's a garage. And they open the garage door and the car's pulling out and it's going right across the sidewalk. So, that was something we incorporated into this because of that specific, knowing that everybody is gonna be exiting or going to their cars from that way.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, I, I see them downtown a lot, too.
Yeah, right.
One, one comment I had, so there was a concern regarding like no left turns out. I think that should be something that's looked at after the fact. Like, it should be studied from an enforcement issue. Like, if, I don't know, I guess I, I'm feeling putting immediately a sign up is not, it should be validated first with some data after operations.
Kristin, that would be a public safety sort of thing, right?
Um, since this is private property, no. And it would be really hard to do after the fact, too. But I think Joe makes a good point.
It's out of the alley, isn't it?
It is. I mean, you could request that the applicant do that.
Meaning it wouldn't be private property, right? To be public? It's a public alley, isn't it?
Right, I think there's similar, like at Einstein Bagels. You're not supposed to turn left out of there.
But I don't think public safety would come in after the fact and put up a no-left-turn sign.
Who's gonna pay for that study?
Okay.
Unless there's a lot of accidents there, then, then it'd be, it would be a worthwhile cause.
Maybe, but it would really have to be, I think, fairly substantial, 'cause we would have to hire HRC to do a whole crash study to determine if it was warranted, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
I mean, you could always ask the applicant to put up courtesy directional signage or something, please exit this way, or something like that.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to reconcile, 'cause it's all two-way.
Can you, can you, can you zoom out a little bit?
Yeah.
So, the request was no left turn, uh, or no?
Could be a no-left turn out of...
From the alley onto Franklin.
That'd be after Woodward.
Left, right.
Your other left.
No right turn, left turn.
So, no right turn out of the alley, going out of Franklin.
Right, correct. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, same with Wilshire. We wanna keep the traffic off the residential streets.
But what if somebody lives down the road? Well, then I shouldn't be driving, right?
That's my only concern is with those other businesses in the alley.
Yeah.
It is util, it could be utilized, I guess.
I mean, I utilize the alley by Westbourne Market all the time I turn right.
Me, too.
Yeah. And I mean, I think, the thing is, is that, I think with a no-right turn on Franklin, then you force all the traffic onto Wilshire that's local, as opposed to splitting them between the two streets, which seems to be more fair.
I mean, my guess would be that a lot of that traffic is coming and going with the intent of using Woodward anyways, just that's just a gut sense.
If they're not in the city.
Right, right.
So logically, it'd flow southbound, making a right, going to the parking lot. And most likely, you'd either go back out Wilshire or go down the alley and go out.
It's tough, because it's not, I mean, it's a long stretch. Like, the alley by Westbourne, very often you're met with an oncoming vehicle, right?
Correct.
So, you have, but it's a short enough distance that you can hold back into the Westbourne parking lot and wait for them to go through, and then you can go through. That's a little bit farther distance, I think.
Yeah, the alley, I think, was 20 feet. I mean, so, it should theoretically fit two cars through there. Almost. Well, that wasn't my only, I mean, yeah, I have no other comments.
And my thought process there is, because of its location on Woodward, I think if they are not traveling to their homes somewhere in Berkeley, they're just gonna, yeah, swoop around, whether going back out on Wilshire or on Franklin to get back on Woodward.
Right, you're, you're not gonna buzz through the Berkeley to go west. It wouldn't be...
So, I, I think all a no-right turn would do is make local people who live close to that more uncomfortable. 'Cause if I was going to my house, I would still get back on Woodward and take it all the way down to Columbia or to Eleven Mile before I, you know, started going through the neighborhoods. Any other discussion? How do we feel about the seven-foot wall?
I was just thinking about that. Ordinance is six feet.
Yeah, minimum.
And that is probably the standard that we've seen across the businesses along the back. I mean, I, I respect the residents' concerns about the privacy and the height of the wall. I feel like my concern is, as we deal with, as we, as time goes on and we deal with more residential lots budding up behind these commercial buildings and potentially being converted to parking, that if we start deviating from the ordinance on the height of the wall, we could start to kinda get an, a non-consistent pattern of wall heights, I mean, so on and so forth. It's, it's an aesthetic thing. Again, I'm not trying to take away from the citizens' concerns of it. I know that, having been educated on conversations like this in the past, I think it was the average truck height headlights is like 55 inches off the ground, or that's come up before. As far as like the respects to where are the headlights, you know, as far as the wall's concerned. And are they, is the wall tall enough to block those headlights? At, at six feet, with the measurement that I'm familiar with, that's 72 inches and it would block out headlights. So, I don't know that in the efforts of keeping a level of consistency up and down the corridors, we deal with more of this, that I'm necessarily in favor of it going a foot taller. But I don't mean that in slight of concerns.
I think, also, different topic, but that's a good point for consistency. As far as the, for our cover letter regarding landscaping, 'cause that's one thing we have in front of us, too. I, I feel it meets the intent of the ordinance.
I agree. I think it does as well.
I, just a few comments. Obviously, the facade looks much better than it does now. So, you know, thank you for bringing that to us. I think it's a definite improvement over what we're looking at right now. The wall height, I guess I'm a little bit torn, 'cause we have increased the wall height in other projects. I do understand the concern with consistency. But this wouldn't be, I don't think you can drive down the corridor and tell a six-foot versus seven-foot. And if they did take out that duplex that we talked about last time and extended the wall, then they could extend it with a seven-foot wall. And the other thing I would, I would point out for a pro for raising the wall is, the parking is right up against the property lines. There's no buffer at all. So, it may make sense to raise it up to seven-foot, just to give them a little bit more sound barrier in the absence of the, the green buffer. As far as the grading on the site, I noticed that your grading plan does not show any existing grades. And I would ask that you include those so HRC can just take a look at the overall, how the, you know, just to make sure there's no off-site drainage spilling over onto the neighbors' properties. I'm assuming there's not, 'cause you're taking an existing parking lot. And I'm assuming you're probably grading it to pretty much match what, what was there. And if there was a concern about it before, we probably'd hear about it by now. But it'd be nice to see for HRC to be able to look at the existing grading and just confirm that. I think that's all I have.
Anything else? All right, so let's start with the seven-foot wall. Commissioner Bartis, yes, no, seven-foot wall?
I would go yes, if that's the request of the citizen.
Yes.
I'm, in the efforts of your comments, I mean, I'm fine with seven feet.
Um, landscaping, do we feel it meets the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else we feel needs to be addressed? Or a motion, if someone's ready? Oh, I did, I just saw something in my notes. The benches and people smoking. So, it is not legal to smoke in pub, to smoke marijuana in public. It's not. So, if, if somebody is, right, like, certainly you have the ability to call police. I don't, I, I did a few field trips when all of these started, to visit a few provisioning centers. I did not see anyone in these sitting outside. They came in, they got their stuff, and they went home. And from what I saw, more people were buying edibles than they were buying smokables, too. So, I get the worry. I don't think, I don't think it's gonna manifest into something that, you know, people are just gonna be hanging out on, on those benches and smoking.
And they would have, you guys have somebody in the parking lot, like, security in the parking lot, to shoot people away, or?
We will have staff that does, does do it.
Okay.
Sorry, I just saw that one.
No, that's gonna catch you.
I saw in my notes. Okay, so, anyone have any additional comments, anything we address, or a motion?
A motion to approve PSP 15-22, which is 28557 Woodward Avenue, the Seven Point Provisioning Center. With, oh, man, it's a, I forget the term, but with, with the conditions of a seven-foot retaining wall.
Screen.
Screen, retaining screen, yeah. A seven-foot retaining, or, screen wall, instead of the six as shown on the plans. I think the only other thing is approval of the landscape.
And...
Compliance with the, um, Arkansas letters.
Yeah, with HRC's review.
And Commissioner Dolan's grading.
Oh, and with the addition of existing elevations shown on the site plan.
Support? Like the cobbler?
I will. Commissioner Bartis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pasalakwa?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Congratulations, guys.
Congrats.
I know we don't have any liaison reports, 'cause I, are you a liaison to anything?
No.
'Cause I think I'm the only liaison in our meetings tomorrow. Any commissioner comments?
No.
Nope.
No.
I just wanna once again thank the public for coming and sharing their thoughts and...
Thank you.
And we, we try and use those comments to try and get the best that we can within the abilities of our ordinances.
Were we gonna talk about the community development report, or it's not on the agenda, but it's in the...
It's just like an FYI.
Okay, perfect.
Kristin, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, we have a meeting at the end of the month. Like I said at the beginning, more informally, it'll be all ordinance discussion items. That's it.
All righty, so, wait, I don't have Patterson, oh, yeah.
Is there a second special meeting in October?
So, we have a potential second special meeting in October. We have to see if the applicant actually gets recommendations of approval from all of the staff. But right now, it's potentially October 11th. And I believe I have, already have a quorum.
Awesome.
May I ask, too, I know I wasn't at the last meeting, but were, were the, were seats filled for officers?
That will be at the, on the next agenda.
Oh, that'll be the next one, okay.
I promise, it has to be.
So, everybody think about which one to be a liaison to.
What are all the different liaisons?
Man, you're really asking me. There's Environmental Advisory Committee, there's Downtown Development Authority, there's ZBA, there's City Council, which is traditionally filled by the chair. That might be it.
Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, thank you. Which we haven't had anyone on for a while.
Some of them are during the day, though, aren't they?
So, DDA is at 8:30 in the morning, which is how I got that one, 'cause I was the only one that could make it. But I think all the other ones are evening.
Evening, okay.
If you could, can you get when those groups meet?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll include, I'll do like a little memo. Yeah.
All right, well, I don't have Greg here to do his motion to adjourn, so if somebody else wants to. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting's opposed.